Okay, that brings us to 3.0, which is comments from the audience. Before we continue while we sort out our cards, how many cards do we have now? Eleven. Okay. So, just a few points of order for those of you who haven't been through this drill before. This section of the agenda, our public comments, is for comments on non-agenda items. And so you know Personnel Matters are confidential and as such will never be on an agenda during an open session. They're always discussed only in closed session. So we do not have any Personnel Matter on our agenda tonight, and if your comments are directed to a Personnel Matter, they'll be in non-agenda, they will be right now in our non-agenda items comments. Another point of order is that Board members are very limited in their response to comments made on items that aren't on the agenda, and we are not permitted to engage in discussion, make comments, or have any back-and-forth or dialogue with the speaker. So, we will, we are happy that you're here. We will listen to all comments, but we can't answer your questions, and if it looks like we're being rude, it's only because we are unable to answer questions. One last call for yellow cards. We have 11 cards tonight. Normally, we would, our protocols call for a 20-minute limit on this, which we can extend at our discretion, or we can trail it to the end of the meeting, and if you've looked at our agenda, you probably don't want to stay till the end of the meeting. So we are going to try to get all of our cards done right now. If we have 11 cards, I think, are they all on the same subject? Okay, so I think we'll go ahead and stick to three minutes per speaker, and if you, if a speaker is saying something that you agree with, or that you would like to stand with, you are welcome to stand up. Well, a lot of you are standing. We can ask, we can ask for a show of hands, everybody who's in agreement with what that speaker's saying. So we don't want anybody to leave here thinking they haven't had the opportunity to make a public comment. We will allow, we will allot the time that we need, and we are willing to be here as long as we have to be here, but we do have staff members and other presenters that would like to get to their part of the agenda, so we're going to try to move right along. It's, okay, so three, where's my Emma's? Three times 11. Okay, we'll be fine. We're going to go through all of our speaker cards, so if I could have the first, or if I could have them all. Okay, we have a speaker who is speaking on a lone topic, and that would be Patty Cowan from the Coronado Schools Foundation.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm Patty Cowan, Director at the Schools Foundation, and good to see you, President Simon, Superintendent Mueller, Assistant Superintendent Byers, and School Board members. It really is my pleasure to be here on a night like tonight when we get to hear from what we celebrate, which is our kids. So when we get to hear Emma and Emma, future mathematician and doctor, our middle-school kids with their outreach, and the amazing academic accomplishments of Isabel and Stephen, it really makes our work worthwhile, as well as the work at the Coronado School of the Arts. The funding from the Coronado Schools Foundation, as you know, supports STEAM programs, and we are passionate and appreciate the partnership with all of these organizations. I just want to briefly follow up with Superintendent Mueller's kind comments about Saturday night. I want to thank everyone who donated, attended, volunteered, supported our teachers to attend. It was truly a magical evening, as Ms. Pontus and Mr. Mueller saw that evening. We had over 425 people. At the Hotel Del Coronado, it was sold out, and it was entertainment. We had five students speak on the importance of the funding from the Coronado Schools Foundation in the areas we fund, and it looks like we're on track for a magical night as far as finances, too. Our proceeds will benefit the schools, and I want to say from our Board Chair, Renee Kavanaugh, who's here tonight, and our Board of Directors, staff, and fabulous volunteers, we just thank everyone from the bottom of our hearts. And if you haven't yet looked at our online auction, that's part of our final budget numbers, please go on csfkids.org/auction, and there's nearly 200 packages where you can buy things from, bid on them from $20 to a couple thousand dollars, including Jimmy Buffett tickets for tomorrow night, and a beautiful painting by Kerry Jackson that was just donated at our high school, as well as brunch before at the Dell that was just added today. So again, thank you for your support, and I appreciate the continued partnership.
Thank you, Patty. Okay, before we go on with the rest of our speakers, who are all speaking on the same topic, I just want to remind everybody that I have no idea who's speaking, what anybody's going to say, but if whoever's speaking you do not agree with, please be respectful. We're all here to listen to each other, and I would just ask that you keep your comments or anything else respectful. Okay, Ms. Alexander? Okay, absolutely. I will put you about three down?
Middle.
Middle, okay.
Good afternoon, School Board members and Mr. Mueller. My name is Dave Myers. I attended Coronado Schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, and I played water polo for six years here in town. I graduated from UC Berkeley, and I now currently reside in Boise, Idaho, and I flew in this morning to attend this meeting. I'm not here to talk about Randall Burgess. I'm here to address the gutless actions of Mr. Carl Mueller, and the impact his actions have had on every teacher in the school district. My mother, Kay Myers, taught in the district for 25 years. I understand teachers. Do you know what every teacher in the district is currently thinking? It could have been me. Let that sink in. It could have been me. Every teacher in the district is thinking, and rightly so, a claim can be made against me without any formal or informal investigation, without reviewing my employment file, without making any attempt to determine the credibility of the claims, without advising the board, without getting a majority vote on my dismissal, without any criminal charges. Carl Mueller can unilaterally remove any teacher from the classroom. There is no documented policy or procedure granting Carl Mueller this authority. And what is really unfortunate is that most educators in the district don't have the support structure that Randy Burgess does. Can you imagine if someone made such a claim against my mother? 25 years in the district, a great teacher, but still highly unlikely that people would give their time, their intellect, their money to support a first-grade teacher against a similar claim. And the same goes for every other Coronado Unified teacher. If you were a teacher from this point forward, what would you think of Carl Mueller, knowing how he treated a fellow colleague? Would you have any confidence that he will have your back in the future? This is not leadership by Carl Mueller. He has abdicated his responsibility to the JPA, an insurance consortium, and he has deserted his teachers. I urge all of you to reinstate Randy Burgess immediately. I encourage you to consider the termination of Carl Mueller for his actions. And lastly, if Randy only taught his athletes one value, it's perseverance, and we will
Thank you, Dave, for the powerful words. Hello, all. My name is Tommy Corcoran. I graduated from Coronado High School in 2004, where I was a tri-sport athlete and honor student. From CHS, I moved on to study and play water polo at USC, where we won a national championship. Post-collegiately, I played water polo professionally and with the U.S. Men's National Team. I currently have a great family of my own, a job, and live in San Francisco. The reason why I bring all this up is that Mr. Burgess is the second-most influential person in my life behind my family. I credit my successes to both of those factions. But what brings me here today is the process by which you removed Randy Burgess from his classroom. At the time he was removed from class, Coach Burgess did not receive a written notice of his removal or the terms of his suspension. He was not advised how long the status would remain in place. He was not advised on how he was expected to interact with faculty and students. He was not shown the third-party complaint. He was not given any details about the claim, and he was not given an administrative remedy to rebut the claim or challenge his status. What organization the size of CUSD puts somebody on leave and fails to provide the information on any of the above? Simply put, we do not believe that this process is fair to any employee, especially the top-notch educators that we have in Coronado. Thank you.
Brittany Hanson.
Hi, Board members, community members. Turn my phone around. My name is Brittany Hanson. I'm a fourth-generation Coronado native, graduate of Coronado High School and UC Berkeley, and I'm currently an educator at the South Bay Union School District. In 1997, Randy Burgess took a chance on me, a loud-mouthed pre-teen with a cumulative three-month experience playing water polo. He called me at 9:00 p.m. on a Sunday night and said he had the pool deck at 4:45 tomorrow morning. That phone call changed the trajectory of my life. And I'm here to speak today about how you, the Coronado Unified School District, have now changed the trajectory of Randy Burgess's life. In Superintendent Mueller's deposition, he said he does not believe Mr. Burgess poses a danger to the students or the staff, which I think many of us can agree upon here today. Yet, in several publications, including the San Diego Reader, ABC News, and NBC News, Coronado Unified District made a statement that said, and I quote, "When the allegations became known, the district followed policy and protocol by taking immediate action to protect the safety and security of district students and staff." We feel this statement is slanderous. You had a choice to act with integrity, and you chose to hide behind legal counsel in making that statement. You chose in that single statement to paint Mr. Burgess as a child rapist. Let that sink in. A child rapist. This was six months after he was removed from the classroom, and it was months after the district had already denied the claim that was brought against him. You had plenty of time to compose a well-thought-out and factual statement, and you failed. You failed a 34-year veteran of Coronado Unified School District. You failed his family, his wife and his children. You failed the teachers here at Coronado Unified, and you failed the community. You, the Coronado Unified School District, had the choice to articulate the realities of the circumstances while not disparaging the reputation of Randy Burgess, and you failed. From this point forward, we ask that the Coronado Unified School District act with higher moral character and integrity. When speaking to the public about the false allegations pertaining to Mr. Burgess, it should be required that all statements are factually supported.
Ms. Alexander, would you like to speak? Okay, that's fine, absolutely. John McCauley.
Thank you, Board, for taking the time. I graduated in 1999, along with my wife, Mandy. We have four children. One of them is a fourth grader at Village Elementary, the other's a first grader at Village Elementary, and I've got two more, gosh darn it, on the way. So, there's more McCauleys coming your way. I wanted to first thank you for your service, for the volunteers that are on this board. I spent a lot of time in the last month speaking to past board members who are, you know, friends, and the one thing that has come through in that is that you guys work very hard for very little, so I would like to thank you for that. I also don't believe that you wake up on any morning and do something that's not in the best interest of the students of the Coronado Unified School District. However, I feel in this case you got it dead wrong, and we refer to the safety of our children and to the staff members at CUSD. And I think over the long term, you have created a situation that creates a very big danger to the future of the students at Coronado Unified School District. A lot of my friends and people that I know are teachers in the Coronado Unified School District, and I believe that they deserve more. I've spoken to many of them over the past month as well, and I think they're watching this very carefully. And so I think you need to think about this in terms of retaining and attracting talent in the future, and what this message sends to them. If you really look at how this case has developed, and my understanding of this case is from the deposition of Carl Mueller and from Rita Byers, so that's where my understanding comes from. It comes from the horse's mouth, so to speak. And I don't appreciate the way that you guys have conducted yourself, and I agree with everything that was said before me, so I don't want to repeat it. But I would also like to say that I have 1,200 people that agree with me. And I've brought a petition that has been signed by 1,200 people, and I've made a copy for each of you to read, and I would like you guys to take the time, please, to read through them. It's a culmination of community members, alumnis, and it's also the greater water polo community. Randy was a member of the U.S. Water Polo Program, and he's affected many people across this country, and there are a lot of people watching this. So I don't know how to give you guys something if I just leave it here how that works, Henry, the Secretary. I appreciate the time, and thank you.
My name is Lane Bobian, and I'm a voting member of this community. In the interest of not being redundant, completely agree with David and John with the petition and with some other comments you'll hear today, for sure. I'm here to call for an immediate vote on the immediate reinstatement of Randy Burgess. And I understand you cannot do that today. That needs to be done in a private forum, as it's a personnel issue. But in lieu of that, as elected officials of our community, I'd like to see where you stand. And I'm asking for a show of hands on if any of you here believe this has been a just, fair process. If you're standing by this process, if you feel there has been due process, if you feel that Randy is, in fact, a threat to our students, if you understand the message that you're sending to teachers now and teachers in the future, if you understand how many people we're speaking to who are considering not getting into this vocation any longer, because this could happen to them, if you understand the gravity of what's happening, show of hands for any of this. Do you stand by the process?
Christina Fink. Okay, Mr. Fink? I don't remember if I mentioned that. I think I published that somewhere. You can cede your minutes to somebody else one time, or a speaker can be ceded minutes one time.
I don't think I'll need them.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Board members and Superintendent Mueller. My name is Buzz Fink. I went kindergarten through 12th grade here, got two daughters that graduated Coronado also. It's my understanding a previous student at Coronado High School, or Coronado Schools has alleged that a teacher had some side of, some sort of inappropriate sexual contact with him. Allegations such as these are so damaging to an innocent teacher wrongly accused, the cloud of doubt will follow him for the rest of his life regardless if he did absolutely nothing wrong. This is so wrong. But when allegations are alleged, certain protocols and actions are required, not just for the liability and the safety of the students. Personal feelings of a teacher's innocence can't be allowed in the decisions that have to be made. Oftentimes, this is such a hard decision because deep down, you know the teacher is innocent. Regardless of personal feelings, certain actions and protocols have got to be followed. The superintendent and board wisely placed the teacher on paid leave. This does not mean that they believe the allegation in any way. This does not mean the superintendent believes the allegation in any way. What else could they do? It appears that it's one person's word against another. There is a statute of limitations for the student to press charges or to sue. I also understand that time is running out in the next 60 days, or I believe even less. If the accuser does not press or file charges, then that would be the exact appropriate time to reinstate the teacher back to his classroom, but not before. To do so would potentially subject the district to huge financial liability. Believe me when I say the district in no way wants to be paying a teacher to stay out of the classroom, and if there was any way that they could do it, I believe 100%, superintendent would do it in a heartbeat. The board would do it in a heartbeat. I was very disappointed the teacher chose to sue to be reinstated. It has nothing to do with the teach, with how the teacher is perceived by the board or superintendent. It has everything to do with the legal system and liability. I believe the teacher knows this, and I do think the teacher should sue his accuser for defamation, because, again, this will follow him the rest of his life like a cloud. And if he is innocent, which I believe he is, I think he should sue the accuser and send a message. As for those calling for the termination of the superintendent or the resignation of the board member, shame on you. Shame on the teacher himself for not putting a stop to that kind of talk. Bullying will not be tolerated, and it's actually a sign of weakness. If you can't convince people to your opinion, then I'm going to bully them to make them do what I want. Shame on you. Coronado is so fortunate to have Carl Mueller as a superintendent and to have a board of educated professionals. I've been around other districts, such as Sandy Seedorf. They're dealing with a corrupt superintendent, by the way, the third corrupt superintendent in a row, corrupt board members, and corrupt staff members. Coronado stands above the rest as an example of exemplary fiscal management and of innovative programs. As to those who say that the teacher in question was not treated fairly, not given his notices, that is why there's a teachers' union, and the teachers' union should be the one pursuing that if that was not done correctly. We, as a public, don't have all the facts, but yet we are stating them as facts. Again, I have faith in our superintendent and board. The superintendent and board have not failed Mr. Burgess. Mr. Burgess was attacked viciously, in my opinion, by a former student, and if the allegation is false, which I believe it is, then he needs to go after them. Lastly, I ask people to please look at the big picture before throwing stones. It's very possible that both sides are right. Mr. Burgess should be back in the classroom. I agree, but I do believe their hands are tied, and I think they're doing what the only thing they could do that is fiscally responsible, and they're obligated as board members to do it. So it's possible that both sides are right, and I would urge you, please don't throw stones and say this person should be fired or that person should, if they don't agree with me. Thank you.
Good evening, or afternoon, afternoon still. I have nighttime board meetings. Good afternoon, Board President Simon, members of the board, Superintendent Mueller, Mueller, sorry, district staff, and members of the audience. I'm here today to speak in support of the full reinstatement of position for Randall Burgess and an end to the destruction of an amazing career. As a former Teachers Association president, current teacher, current water polo and swimming coach, and an elected board member of a community college district, I feel I have a unique perspective to offer this board and the community. Mr. Fink is correct in his comments about process. However, you do have a situation where some parts of the process and some parts of your own goals, as stated on your own website, have not been followed. As board members and elected officials, we're all aware of optics. How does it look to the voting community? And I know how this is. I would point out the optics of this case should be a concern. Through the actions of the board, the actions of the superintendent, the media stories and rumors, your constituents are left wondering how an upstanding individual can have their career and image so disparaged by one single legally proven to be baseless allegation. It is worth noting that unlike other cases of this type, you have not received any other complaint. Usually, they come out of the woodwork. There are none. So you should have that as a kind of a barometer, a metric of how this is really not a based allegation. There's the optics of lack of due process, which is guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution, California Education Code, and your own collective bargaining agreement. I would also like to remind the board, staff, and the community, the board's own statement on their website that says, "The governing board is committed to transparent operations, data-driven decisions, and active and comprehensive oversight. The administration is committed to open communications and comprehensive information." Again, the optics viewed very differently than this statement. But also, Ryan, the board, staff, and community, that according to your website, two of your three goals. Number two, communication. Communicate openly, freely, and accurately to engage and involve all shareholders. Goal number three, support. Maintain safe and supportive schools where student and staff thrive. Mr. Burgess is definitely not getting the support and ability to thrive from this board or the superintendent. My last reminder is that the superintendent only has one boss, and that is the board, and the board's only boss is the voters. Thank you for your time.
I have one more card. Ms. Alexander, would you like to go, or would you like our last speaker to go first? Okay. Jim Pecorni.
Thank you. My name is Jim Pecorni. I've lived in, don't have much of a voice tonight, I'm sorry. Lived in Coronado for 25 years. In fairness, I've known Randy for 25 years. He coached my son playing water polo, and some of you guys he's aware of as well. April 3rd of this year, he was summarily thrown off the campus. That changed his life. It continues to change his life. I've been a lawyer for 40 years. I've been in every single court in this county for 40 years. I've handled thousands of criminal cases. I'll tell you what, when someone makes an allegation like this, it's serious. The district attorney, regardless who's in office, takes allegations of child molestation extremely seriously. Why? Because they want to protect our kids, and they should. Even though I'm a defense lawyer, it doesn't mean I think everyone should get off.
Mr. Pecorni, can you make sure you speak into the microphone, because people at home won't be able to hear you?
I'm sorry about that. My experience over those 40 years is that when an incident like this occurs, it's reported to the local police agency before it goes to the district attorney's office. In this particular case, my understanding is it did go to Coronado Police Department, and my understanding also is that the district attorney's office considered it and rejected it. There have been no charges filed. I've seen nothing in any newspaper article, nothing in any public forum that indicates, A, there's an ongoing investigation by the police department, or B, there's any kind of ongoing prosecution. Any of you can go down to South Bay Court, to Chula Vista, look in the public records, ask the clerk to look at the defendant's index, Randall Burgess, and see if something is there. Zip, nothing. So, here's my question. And Superintendent Mueller, I've known you a long time, too, and I've known your dad as a lawyer for a long time. I finally heard the word "due process" just a few minutes ago. That's really important. It's one thing to say, we've got to protect our kids, but when you also say, "We've got to investigate this," come on. This happened years ago. He was thrown off the campus six months ago. Police Department didn't know anything about it. District Attorney's Office didn't do anything about it. What the hell more investigation can be done? The investigation, if it's being done, should be wrapped up. He should be reinstated, and I'm going to leave the dais with 30 seconds
Either one.
I'm very nervous. I don't know if I can do this, but my daughter has encouraged me to come today. There's no way I can fit all of this into two minutes. I represent the silent majority. I represent the silent majority in this room. I'm a non-water polo parent. I'm a non-legacy parent. I support the school board in removing Randy Burgess. My daughter was a student who was sexually harassed by this man before, during, and after school from 2010 to 2013. We moved to Coronado for our daughter to be in a safe school environment with good academics and to dance the cosa. This is my firsthand accounting of what happened. I don't know if any of the allegations are true, but I know what my daughter endured. He made her life a living hell, starting when she was a shy, barely 14-year-old girl, innocent, and sexually harassed her throughout the year in the PE class. His harassment escalated in her sophomore year, still shy and innocent. Where in front of 50 parents and students after the modern-day game, Burgess shouted out to her not to give any hickies to the boy she was hooking up with. She was humiliated and shamed and spent the next three days absent from school. She was still shy and innocent and not at all sexually active at this point. In the winter of 2011, under Burgess's watch, a son of a prominent naval doctor and donor to CSF formed a club called the Pussy Brigade to prey upon and deflower virgins. Our daughter was the prime target of this predator. Burgess condoned it and relished, in a creepy way, hearing tales of weekend conquests. As I read this...
Thank you, thank you. Please, be respectful.
This is my account, audience, this is my account and what I experienced. As I read this, I am nauseated by what my daughter endured. The players that called him out on his behavior were blackballed and not given recommendations to Stanford and Berkeley. And I can name three. He condoned a predatory culture, modeled sexual harassment and objectification of women. My daughter begged me not to file a Title IX complaint. I don't know that this experience was isolated to her four years at Coronado High School, given the aquatics director lawsuit against the city back in 1995. I really am impressed by all your accomplishments in the Olympics and CIF titles and everyone becoming doctors and lawyers, but what I care about is the students are safe. And I ask you that you support the board's decision. What is more important, parents, an admittance to Berkeley or Stanford, or the character of your child? A character that does not objectify women, a character that respects women, and a character that does not make sexual harassment a joke and diminish sexual harassment as a joke? The world has changed now that women and girls are coming forward. Be leaders, protect our children, and encourage Mr. Burgess to seek counseling. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our speakers, and we would like to thank, I would like to thank everyone who spoke here tonight, also to those who emailed, called, and texted with your thoughts. I understand and appreciate all the emotions that this issue has brought up, and they were evidenced in people's voices tonight. In our roles as governing board members, we can't bring emotion into our decision-making process. Our decisions are based on facts, policy, and adherence to the law. The governing board would like to make the following statements. Regarding our priority on student safety, all decisions made by the governing board and superintendent will always be made with the safety and interests of our students first. The allegations in this case are of the most extreme nature. We are confident that we have acted in a manner consistent with our own board policies, the California Education Code, and the Constitution of the State of California. The status of a police investigation does not dictate our conduct. The police and district attorney examine whether a matter can be proven beyond a reasonable doubt. As long as an investigation or lawsuit against the district or one of our employees is pending, we will weigh our decisions according to student safety. Paid administrative leave is neither a suspension nor a disciplinary action. We would like for this matter to...
Oh. Sorry. Yeah.
I can wait. We would like for this matter to conclude in a timely manner so that we can turn our full focus, where it should be, on educating students. However, proper protocol and adherence to procedure is our paramount concern. The governing board and the superintendent have always and will always ardently defend the confidentiality of CUSD staff members. As such, we will never discuss personnel matters publicly. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. We're going to move on to 4.0.
What is a suspension? What is a suspension? When I was suspended from school, I had to stay home. Randy's staying home right now. It's inappropriate how you rolled that deck and laughed at her. Shame. She had three chances.
Three chances.
To Jay Day, you have a five-teacher dish.
That's your process, not ours.
Don't let an insurance company run your school day.
All right, let's move on with the meeting.
Thank you. All right. Brings us to...